Morning meetings, because I know we all have somewhere we need to be. I will start by saying that it is November 13th, and this is our Friday morning COVID check-in meeting that we have been doing for several months now. I'll start by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is not being recorded by WACA cable TV, but Mr. Adams is recording it and he will get that to the appropriate place where the community can watch the meeting later. Our order of business this morning is the same as it has been essentially every Friday morning. A call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. We'll have time for public comment. Administrative items include COVID-19 update, COVID-19 travel policies that we've been talking about. Second reading here, Thanksgiving break extended for remote only phases, models of learning, status of athletics, season two winter sports, and then we will adjourn. I will just take a roll call and just ask you to confirm everybody that you're okay with this order of business. Mark Terry?
Here in present, yes.
Kathy Bates?
Here and yes.
Paul Kendall?
Here and yes.
Aaron Williams?
Here and yes, and apologies, I can't get my camera to turn on right now.
Excellent, thank you, we know you're here. So we will start by asking if there's anybody here from the public who would like to make a comment before we start our agenda items. And if you are, please just unmute yourself or raise your hand. Let me know that you'd like to offer some comments now is the time.
I have, oh, wait a second. I have a comment.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Tricia Davis.
For everybody else when the community watches it later.
Right, so I work, I'm an employee at Ashland Schools. And it's kind of weird to have public comment at the beginning before you guys all talk about everything, because I don't want to assume what you're going to think and what you're going to say. But I just wanted to say that I appreciate the position you guys are in and the fact that you have to make decisions about our school and our community. And you have pushback from our governor, who pretends that he's locking, started to lock down the state, but, and not including schools in that plan. And I know there's a push for the, from the commissioner for us to be, to stay open and be fully open. And it's really hard for me to kind of hear that when I watch the news and I see that we've just had two really, really unbelievably high days for positive cases in our country and the state. And I'm wondering whether, at what point does, do we switch from having the mindset of opening schools for kids and what are we doing for kids? And then versus looking at, as a public health crisis? Because it is, schools are part of our community, they're a big part of our community. And to think that it's, schools are an isolated, kind of insulated area that there really isn't. Everyone keeps saying kids aren't getting it, they're not spreading it, but that's just not a metric. I'll believe until I actually see the numbers, because testing the kids would show us that. So anyway, I'm just throwing it out there. I know it's a tough, it's a tough thing that you guys are doing. And I, I feel like in my head, I'm gone, I've gone past the point of the desire to really have the kids in school, because I do want the kids in school. But I really am wondering with all the numbers going up, how safe, how safe that is.
Thank you, Tricia. I have a feeling that you'll probably hear some of us address the governor's position and some of your other questions during the meeting. I appreciate the difficulty of having to communicate in the beginning of the meeting, but based on what you said, I think we'll be talking about some of your concerns.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so thanks, Jim. Having heard that, and I know that you have other things planned to share with us today. This would be a good time for you to fill us in on, on what's going on in your end.
I just wanted to make sure there was no one else, sorry, Laurie.
Well, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Anybody else from the public that would like to share? Don't see any hands raised, but certainly you can unmute yourself and let me know you're here if I don't see you.
Great.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jim, thanks.
So as typical, when we start the meetings, I'm just going to share the dashboard with folks. Now that the state is actually holding true to their word and posting things on Thursday evenings, you know, we'll, we'll have those out and this will be shared with the community. It has been updated a little bit for a few different pieces of data point. And thank you to Aaron Williams, and she and I spent Veterans Day pulling this together, trying to make it a little more user-friendly for some of us to look at some of the data. So let me share this with you. And let me just move this around a little bit so I can see it myself.
Jim, do you want me to walk through some of the changes?
Sure, that'd be fine, Erin, yep.
Sure, okay, so in the incidence rate by week, which is the week by week graph, yep, that Jim's hovering over right now. What I did is I did two things. One, the red ones are going to be the top five times for our town. And those will shift as we have more incidents that go, you know, in the twenties and higher. And so now you can see which weeks were the top five weeks since we started counting. And the red line is the median of the top five. So as you can see, there's only a few weeks, and Tricia, this kind of goes to what you were just saying. There's only a few weeks that are above where we were at in the prior week. And that, just having it being colored and having that reference line makes it a little bit easier to point out our trajectory and where we are sort of compared to the peak of the spring. And you know, this could shift to a point, like, we hope it doesn't happen, but this could shift to a point where the data coming in the next six weeks starts to all turn red, because it's now higher than what we were experiencing in the last night. So that's the first piece. The second is, we added this yellow side, horizontal bar below the school age children. And what this is, is the quarantine students by building and as a percentage basis of the population of that building. So that one should be pretty straightforward. On the Tri Valley League, I've eliminated the incidence rate for the towns, because we weren't really using those data points. And so this is just their, sorry, I eliminated the positivity rates. We're just using their incidence rates now. And this axis will fluctuate week to week. When we started this, everybody was pretty much below the yellow. And now everybody's pretty much above the red. So it would not be a fair comparison to look week after week as, at the same, because we're needing to allow that axis to flex, because the numbers are changing so drastically. So just to be aware of that. Then we have the three more data points at the bottom, which are teachers quarantined, APS students quarantined, and then symptomatic versus asymptomatic, which is Audrey, Ed and Jim, Audrey and Ed giving Jim that information based on their contact tracing efforts.
Hey, Erin, just real quick, this just might be a little, the formula might need to be updated. Your red line of the incident rate by week, you said that's the median, right?
It's the median of the top, no, it's the median of the top five.
Right, median of the top five can't be the second to highest, would have to be the middle one.
We'll get into that, yeah, we'll look at that after.
So it needs to be the one, it needs to be the next data point. Means there should be two above it and two below it.
There's one on it, that's why, I think.
We have five, so there should be two, one on it, two above it, two below it. That's how many.
Okay, I mean, I use the median function with that Excel, so I will look at it later.
Great, thanks. But, but what I want to point out more, you know, importantly, is I think there's some useful stuff in here that we talked about at last week's meeting, about, you know, the asymptomatic versus symptomatic, looking at, you know, how is it impacting the schools in terms of who's being quarantined? And how is that impacting the absentee rate? And what does that mean in terms of being able to function as a district? You know, in terms of, this is just students, but then we also have the teachers. How is that impacting the day-to-day operations? And what I want to be clear is, just because you're quarantined, doesn't, it's not indicating that these are folks that are positive. They could be the close contacts. And, and we're finding the close contacts that are being tested are, I think, 98% negative, Ed, if that's pretty close to statistic. But what you'll notice here is that our cases per 100,000 this week went down significantly from the prior week. You have to remember, we've said over and over here that this is a data point within a community. We are looking at what is happening within the schools on a daily basis. And in order to make sure that we're accurate with our data, remember, the state data is also about five days behind ours in terms of what we're presenting. We're presenting actual data through yesterday morning. And the state presents theirs through a prior Monday morning. So we've just got to be careful when we're looking at state versus adjusted data. Our positivity rate is 3.96 this week. And you'll notice that, that being said, we're, we're increasing the number of positivity from the prior week by almost 1%. Yes, the governor and the commissioner certainly changed their metrics. I put it on this screen as reference for you. We have not adopted this. And again, I want to be clear with all those listening and who will, who will eventually listen to this. The metrics is a data point only, singular. It's one piece that we're using. We're not saying this has to be how we approach things every single week. Because again, we could have an outbreak in, in assisted living that might put us in the red. That's not impacting the opening of schools. And while, yes, it's a community health concern, we want to be very thoughtful of how we're approaching it in, in the buildings and in the district. And I certainly can, can say when we're looking at the Ashland High School quarantine, we could say, oh, it's 27 kids, it's 4% of, of the population that has enrolled in the schools, meaning we've, we've removed all the kids who are remote only. Well, I can also tell you, those numbers are split 50/50, just about, with regard to cohort A and cohort B. So it's not all the same kids and all the same groupings. And a number of those kids will be, or staff will be coming off from that as well.
So Jim, just a quick question on that. The teachers and students quarantined are only, did you just indicate that, that we're only talking about the ones that are in person, or are we talking about all our, all our students?
So, say that again, Paul, I'm not understanding.
Wait, if I'm inferring what you just said, that the 71 students are all in-person students?
Correct, that is correct, that is correct. Those are, I have removed all the remote students from, excuse me, I think there might be one remote student in there.
There's one, there's one.
I think there's one in there, yep.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'd ask the, the group whether we wanted, you know, whether the knowing of all of our students is important or breaking it out. But the other question I had, Jim, was, does our quarantine numbers exclude isolated numbers for top positive cases? Does it, or does it include positive cases?
No, it's exclude.
Okay.
I had one question on that data point as well. Are the figures regarding quarantine students and staff the four, the same as sort of the 14-day average, or is that like current as we sit here today?
It's current as of yesterday.
As of yesterday, okay.
And that number will significantly change in the coming days.
Me, up or down?
Because of information that you're aware of.
Yes, it should go down, Mark. Yeah, it would be going down, basically, again, remember, we, we're going back in time. And, you know, we're giving you the most accurate data.
As of yesterday morning.
Yesterday morning, yeah.
So I mean, I guess as, as I look at, there are three data points I'm looking at, I guess, when I make this next comment. And that one is the rolling 14-day case average, the other is the 14-day school age cases and then the quarantine numbers. And, you know, certainly it looks like, you know, nobody knows what tomorrow's going to bring, but if we don't see another outbreak in the next week, these numbers should come down, because we see a pocket kind of ending around 11, 4, 5, 6. And then the, the new outbreaks have been much smaller since the seven. Doubt it's going to stay that way, but you know, there's, there are a lot of cases there. And I assume that the quarantine numbers roll with that, you know, in many respects.
Correct.
Is that, is that a fair assumption?
Ed? Yeah, yeah, and Ken, so let me, I want to just make a comment here too. So if you notice that we, right now, we have 65 open cases. Just so you all know, I compiled the data for Jim at 7:00 AM on Thursday mornings. Since then, just so you all know, we've had seven cases come off, four of which involve school age children since yesterday. Now I, but we did receive six new cases since 7:00 AM yesterday, but none of them are school age children and affect our schools at all.
So, so again, I think it's imperative that as we're looking at data, that we're trying to make sure.
Hi.
Someone needs to mute there.
Okay, good. I think it's on.
Okay. Can I mute her, did Paul, someone, because I'm not looking at the screen.
Yeah, I just muted her.
Thank you. So what I would say is that, again, we're looking at this data every day and we're having conversations with our health professionals to determine what is the right thing to do. And, you know, at this point, you know, we've been, I think, diligent in, in our efforts to maintain at least the hybrid model. I, I will say, I'm going to stop sharing here if this is okay. I would say to the point that, that Tricia made as well, we are not beholden, and I, and I would say this very strongly, to the governor or the commissioner's comments. If this community feels as though we need to make an adjustment, I believe the school committee and the health professionals here will say, Jim, we need to make the adjustment, whether we believe in what the commissioner and the governor had put out in their most recent color-coded dashboard. And I think that's important for everyone to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, so go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just wanted to echo that thought process, because if from the beginning, we, you know, we've always focused on trying to do what we think is right and, you know, rely upon health professionals, I think, I don't know what the state's doing. You know, that the, I get very skeptical when, when somebody comes up with a set of metrics. When those metrics say something they didn't want it to say, they change them. You know, that, that to me represents, it makes everything they're doing lack credibility. And so I, to the extent that we even started looking at those metrics, which I think we very quickly found, you know, quite frankly, were not the best way to make decisions, because they didn't tell the story behind it. And I think with Jim, your help, Ed's help and Audrey's help in particular, you know, you've been able to give us the story behind it, which really makes it easier to make decisions, at least for me. But, you know, to the point that Tricia made before, you know, I think it is, I, I don't have much faith in what the state's going to say. You know, if they're going to, at some point, come in and say, all schools should close, well, you know, we'll have to do that. My understanding is they're basically telling us, we shouldn't have done what we did in the spring, when the governor basically ordered the closure. So go figure, right? You know, I think what I, just the comments sort of on where we were briefly last week and the week before, you know, what I lean towards is, if we start to see evidence of spread within our school district, and it doesn't have to be substantial necessarily, but when we see evidence that it really is transmitting from one kid to another, and I think in some respects, I don't want to say more importantly, but I think the place where that evidence might be shown is with staff, because most of the kids are asymptomatic. Staff are more likely to show symptoms, and if we start to find that that's, that's occurring, then I think we really need to take a hard look at what we're doing. But it doesn't sound like we're there right now.
Right, and I would say, we have not seen that transmission from a student to a, to a staff member, that the staff, any quarantine or et cetera, would have happened outside of our system.
I do want to echo and just add just a little bit to what Mark just said about the state's announcement recently and to Tricia's comments in the beginning. We have said since day one, we were going to break the numbers down as they relate to Ashland and also include the other factors that we think that are important, that we've been talking about all along. So, you know, whatever they say or don't say, we've kind of announced our process in the beginning and we've stuck pretty true to that process. However, you know, it does sort of complicate things when a statement comes out like that from the, you know, authorities, that again, like Mark said, seems a little bit not based in reality. And I wanted to pay, pass along that, I didn't do this research myself, but Tracy Novick, who works for MAFC and is on the school committee in Worcester, broke down that statement, particularly some of the medical studies that were cited in making the statement, and there are flaws and problems with all of, all of those references. And I can't say right here what they are, but really just saying that it's kind of suspect to, to me, anyway, it sounds like to Mark as well, that the metric suddenly changed, even though we all see what's going on around us in the country and we see what our own personal circumstances are and it doesn't line up. So just for whatever it's worth, I just wanted to, to reiterate, because again, we've said it from the beginning, that we're always going to do what makes the most sense based on what we know is going on right here.
Can I, can I just add one more comment too? Which, you know, there's always those scenarios too, when Audrey and Jim and I talk, you know, every day. And, and sometimes we're conflicted and, but I will tell you one thing that, which is a benefit for us, is Audrey and I have direct access 24 hours a day to the state epidemiologist. So whenever we have a concern or we're not sure, Audrey and I, we do a conference call with the state epidemiologist and we run the scenario by them, just, and it helps us sometimes make our decisions.
Yeah, and, and, you know, to, to address some of the other things that Tricia said, we're not beholden, not only to what the state says, or we're also not beholden to some metric we attempted to put on a piece of paper months ago, or even as we updated these met, these metrics, these new metrics that are coming out. And I, I won't get into whether they're flawed or whatever. You know, I sympathize with the state's position that, that, that there's all sorts of, there's 351 communities, right? And some of them are doing an amazing job at trying to be effective with a hybrid or model and things like that, and others are not doing as well. And, and it's tough to come up with policies and things that, you know, bring everyone up to a certain level and standard. So what we're going to do is, what we continue to do is to figure out what's in our best interest in keeping the school open for as long as we can, where we believe that keeping it open is not presenting in itself, you know, a public safety risk, right? And to address particularly one of the things Tricia said, Ed, the work that Ed, Audrey, you know, Amy Childs, all those people are doing, is the reason we can confidently say that opening the schools is not contributing to the spread. That contact tracing, it's not a data point that can be published to you because of confidentiality, but those individuals can provide us and guide us on what they're seeing when they're doing this incredible work that they're doing, which takes an enormous amount of time. So, you know, we, we always say this, but people, when you make poor decisions and they have to contact you and start doing contact tracing, the amount of hours you've just cost them is amazing, so. It, it, but that is the reason we can make these, these decisions. It's not some crude data point. To Jim's point, we're getting from Ed, Audrey and the team what the data actually means. We could have an outbreak of 20 people, but if it's in three households that traveled together that they've already been isolated, well, that shouldn't impact our ability to open schools. If that 20 was spread among 20 households and we're not sure where it came from, well, that would be, you know, a different context and data point that we would need to determine whether, hey, do we pump the brakes? Do we go remote for a week like we did when we, you know, when Ed and Audrey and the team needed more time to contact trace at the high school and middle school when, when that came about? So we're not just going off some data points on a slide, but we're going off guidance from the people that are doing the work and understanding where it's coming from and how it's transmitting. So I'm confident in saying that, you know, despite the increased numbers in Ashland, keeping the schools open so far has been the right move, because of the context that the team has been able to give us.
I'm just going to say, I'm going to, no, I'm just going to jump off into my other call. I will try to come back hopefully when it's over. Stay a little bit, hopefully.
Okay, Jim, back to you.
Okay, no, I, I think, I mean, I have not much more to say, other than the, you know, a message I'll be sending out to the community today is, again, strongly, you know, discussing how, you know, we're not just falling prey to the commissioner and the governor's words, and nor are we blinded by the fact that, that we could potentially have to shut down at some point, based on the numbers. And we want to focus on what's right for Ashland. I'm more concerned honestly with personnel, that, that our school buildings can't function and operate because staff is out, not necessarily because of, of students. But if, if those numbers continue to escalate in a particular building and we can't operate, because one, there are not enough substitutes. Two, you know, if, if someone has to quarantine or is isolated for 14 days, how are they going to teach their class? Three, you know, we, we're still struggling hiring people. We've got a number of open positions in the district that I've advertised all over the place. We're not the only district struggling with this. Every district in the Commonwealth is struggling with trying to find sufficient amounts of employees. That to me is more of a risk than, in my lens, to shutting down and having to go remote, than our process we've taken with, with contact tracing and, in our positivity rate and the number of students, et cetera. So that's a real concern for me. And it goes back to, again, folks doing the right things and asking people to make a sacrifice. Laurie, you've talked about this over and over. I know from our perspective in my house, we've got all our extended family that live near us, except for my family in Vermont. We're not getting together. Worst thing with ourselves for Thanksgiving and for holidays and weekends, because it's the right thing to do at this point in time. And that's what we continue to ask our, our community members to do. I won't belabor that, we can move into the policy, so.
Well, we were going to, I think Thanksgiving is.
Oh, yes.
We started that conversation last week, and I don't know if this is going to be you, Jim, or Audrey and Ed to kind of.
I'll just, I'll just bring it up, I mean, we, again, it was more of a starting point of a conversation. We are still not, I still don't have any data that supports that we should be shutting down for the week after Thanksgiving. I'm not necessarily, I'm not recommending that, I'm just saying that, that it's a conversation we should have, because other districts have had that conversation. And is there a fear that, that families are not going to adhere to the, the physical, you know, distancing guidelines and the small group gatherings? Yeah, it's probably going to happen. There's no doubt that some are going to say, you know what, the heck with it, we're going to do what we want to do and put a community at risk. But do we shut down the system for a, a small group of folks who do that? I don't know, I don't have that answer for you. But I think our process of still even during that Thanksgiving week, we'll be monitoring. We're still going to be collecting the COVID data. We're still going to be seeing how it's impacting and could impact our schools. I would, I would certainly hold, the, I'd reserve the right to say, that Friday morning, when we have our meeting after, the Friday after Thanksgiving, if those numbers have exploded, I reserve the right to say, hey, we need to go remote. And, you know, as much as we want to give families and educators the, the appropriate time to plan for it, sometimes making a premature decision isn't the right thing to do either. Audrey and Ed, if you want to weigh in, please do so.
Yeah, I would, from a, you know, public health point of view, even though it might seem premature in the moment, because today, everything is okay. I mean, from a public health standpoint, do we have anything to gain by being proactive and taking some space during that time?
I mean, I, I, again, I, I agree with Jim. I mean, I think we need, just need to look at the numbers that week and just, again, because, you know, we have a lot of those quarantine numbers are also going to be coming off next week. I, I think it's a wait and see.
I'm on both sides of the fence too. Part of me says, let's keep it open and see how we're doing and watch the numbers. But the other part worries that we're not going to do the right thing, we as a community.
I mean, if, if my conversation with Jim and what I'm hearing from, it sounds like we don't make a decision because of Thanksgiving. We treat Thanksgiving like we would anything else and make a decision based on the data we have coming into it and exiting that that week is.
Well, I think the difference call is, is that it's, it's not just another normal week. It's a week that calls for gatherings. And now that we've been through Halloween and we've been through some parties that we know about and we've been through, you know, we know people are gathering. So I think it's based on, on, on what we've seen so far and based on what Thanksgiving actually is. We think we can assume that we're gonna have some problems that we're going to have to deal with afterwards. And it's just the extent of, of how bad they are.
Right.
Right. So I, I think you totally misunderstood what he just said. So what I hear people say
Clarify that for me, please.
What's that?
If I misunderstood what you said, why don't you clarify it?
So I'm, based on what, I've had conversations with Jim, what he just said, what Audrey and Ed just said, is that we're going to not, we're not hearing a recommendation to, because it's Thanksgiving, make a preemptive decision. But just like we're doing now, and maybe we do it more frequently, even we, we look at it more frequently and maybe Jim or Ed and Audrey can say, let's have an emergency meeting to discuss it if the data comes up, but make it based on the data and not just that it's Thanksgiving and be preemptive with it because.
Right. So I understand perfectly what you said. And so what I'm saying back to you is because it's Thanksgiving and we know what happens on Thanksgiving and we already know what's happened on some of the other events leading up to now that encourage gatherings. Is there, it's just a question. I'm not saying that I feel that that's what needs to happen, but it's not a normal week. We know what's going to happen.
And I think we know it's not a normal week. I'm almost of the, and having thought about this more since last week, it was my initial feeling. I, I guess initially I felt, yeah, let's close because that gives a long period of incubation if something were going to happen, yada, yada. But I also think it's a more of a permission slip to not be conscious of your community and try to do something. And then make sure you fall within the window and then get back into school. And I think, I actually think that not closing puts more onus on the families to take their responsibility more seriously.
Anybody else on that? I mean, it doesn't sound like there's a majority of people or a recommendation for us to decide today. But certainly
Yeah, no, I think we continue the conversation. I'm not, again, I'm not saying, I'm just not recommending it today. I'm saying we need to look at that data throughout next week and we need to continue to analyze it. It could be potentially, Lori, not after the week of, after Thanksgiving. It might be the two weeks after Thanksgiving that, that we find out that, that things have hit, right? So now we're, you know, we're, we're struggling with, with that component of it. And, and I said last week too, if, if we do this for Thanksgiving, then we're doing this for all vacations and in December break, et cetera. I just think we'll
Another question for the health professionals is too. And again, like I said, I'm not really advocating for anything. I'm not sure that the right thing to do is either. I just want to understand, you know, the different pros and cons to either choice. I haven't even heard that taking a week off is going to prevent anything. If that's the case, where we're going to see things two weeks later, if, if taking the week off doesn't help, then what's the point of that?
Yeah. And I guess my point, Lori, is everything that Jim and Audrey and Ed are saying is let the data decide. And the cause of the, of a data spike might be Thanksgiving, but we're not making it, we're not going to make a preemptive decision. We're not giving a recommendation to make a preemptive decision because of Thanksgiving by itself. It's going to be data driven. And to Jim's point, that's the other thing I was going to mention is like, and if we're doing it for Thanksgiving, you know, we're doing it for everything then, right? If we make the, what, what's going to, what's going to change if we make a preemptive decision for Thanksgiving? We'd make it for, you know, Christmas, New Year's break, for, you know, the two breaks in February, March, we'd be doing the same thing, right?
Right. No, I totally do understand that. It's just a matter of how much of a spike we're going to get from these events.
I agree. And that's why
When it starts.
And that's why I think we watch it. You know, Kathy made a point to me last week too about, you know, if we go remote that week after Thanksgiving, the cohort B groups miss four consecutive opportunities for in-person learning, right? They missed the Thursday, Friday already. And then you go remote the following week and they get two less days of in-person as well. So you know, just trying to, to think about those things as well, I hadn't even considered. So.
Excellent. Okay. So it sounds like there's, there's no need for any action on that today. And we can move on to policy, which is our second reading. And Paul, thank you. We got your edits. And it seems like all the concerns were reflected in the, the new document. So I'm wondering if anybody has any additional comments or concerns? Did you all have a chance to read the updated policies? And Mark's not here. And I don't know if you heard from him individually, Paul, on anything?
Yeah. Can I, oh, sorry. Can I jump in, Paul?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. What I want to say, Lori, is the, the policies themselves, Mark Terry did provide us input. And, and the policies that you have reflect that input. And then I took that input as well and, and I discussed it with Michelle Smith. And so the policies do represent those conversations. And in our, you know, for me, I, I think are in an excellent position. It puts some work that I will have to do with my admin team for some procedural things, which is what, where we wanted it to be. And especially with our, with our families and students. So as soon as we can get a policy squared away and approved, then I can send it to families and I will then meet with my admin team to get the procedures squared away for, for our families that, that may not adhere to the executive order. So.
Okay. So thank you. So you're recommending them and you've talked it through with Michelle. The attorneys have looked at it. All school committee members have had a chance to weigh in.
Yeah.
So unless there are any other comments or concerns, we should be able to, the second reading, so we should be able to vote those policies today.
Yeah. So Lori, do you want me to just bring them up and just point out the, the changes from last time?
Sure, Paul. Thank you.
Let me. I'll bring up the clean version and just talk about, so let's see. Let's start with. So you should be able to see the clean version of the employee policy. Is that true?
Yes.
So there was some minor changes in this, in this top paragraph, primarily, you know, we do have staff that are remote, teaching remote only and things like that. So kind of specified more of those things in both there and the covered person. And for the high risk, I'm sorry, for the, for the covered travel, just added some language in there for covering the exemptions that exist and, you know, more aligning with the state's travel order and the exemptions there. So people weren't conflicted about, hey, I commute from this state, what's going on, things like that, that are covered there. We added this section back and this is what Jim referred to, that he discussed with Michelle, that just asking the staff members that are going to plan to travel to, to let the principal know. So if there, if there is going to be any absence relative to that travel, that they can make accommodations. So it's not a requirement. It's, it's a request. And that's the primary changes to this policy. It was relatively minor changes. So that was probably the most significant one is, is adding that notification back in. You know, just to help us make sure we can operate and provide the services in the event somebody needs to be absent. Any questions on that policy? That was pretty light changes.
No, looks good.
Does anyone want to make a motion on that one? Or we can just do them one by one?
I move that we accept the, or approve the Ashland Public Schools COVID travel policy for employees as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And all in favor, Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Karen Williams?
Aye.
Kathy Bates?
Aye.
An aye for me. Mark is absent for this vote. And then the next one, Paul?
So Lori, I don't know if there's a stand. So one of the things we didn't, I didn't look at with this is how it fits into our policy manual as far as its labeling. So that, that's something we'll, you know, we could probably, I'm assuming we can leave up to Jim to do. He obviously needs to put in the bottom of it, the, but not this one, I'm sorry. This student wants some updates that he'll need to make. But so I guess, I assume it's okay to leave it up to Jim and Karen to work with MASC to put it in the right spot. And because we typically have labels on, on our policies. And this one's a temporary one. I don't know where it would go, but.
And we can, we can have Karen reach out to MASC to, to get a, a, you know, ASCD or whatever. Yeah. I'm going to label it DTRT, do the right thing.
Yeah.
So.
I liked her other one we talked about the other day.
Yeah.
That I want to share. All right. So moving on to the other one, this is the student policy. And then hold on, let me just bring up the red line version of that as well. Okay. Are you able to see the clean version of that policy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So same for covered travel, we added the, the language for the exceptions there. Return to school. This is, this is in addition to Mark, the good catch on this part is with athletics, it's not just participation, but if you plan to attend in any way, shape or form. So if you're one of the parents that is going to show up, this also applies to you. You're not allowed to come if you haven't complied with the policy. So before I just said participation in athletics, but we're also talking about the people that will attend athletic events. So here's where, here's the notification kind of changed. We took out some of the detail and, and just to give you the history on the, the first iteration of the policy was really just capturing of the conversation that Jim, Ed and Audrey and I had with what they want to see. And now we can take that out and, and Jim can maintain that, that detail in a, in a separate document. But one of the things that I added after Mark's comment was just this last part as set forth by a superintendent to make sure that the policy grants Jim the ability to set the parameters of that notification. And that was my concern about removing it is just someone being able to tell Jim that, hey, you went, you went too far. What gives you the right to do this? And want to make sure the policy gives him the proper authority to do those things. So then so we had a little bit of update. It's more verbiage for most of this that we did modify, you know, we, we are more consistent with the phrasing and capitalization and things like that. We, we did kind of simplify this paragraph here. And, and just, just kind of didn't talk much about the form and what it's going to contain, left that up to Jim to create that form. And I think that is probably the biggest. And then this was, the procedure statement was up in the, in the notification section, moved it down. So not a ton of changes. I also in here on both of the policies, I did put the the location and the travel order for those exemptions because they don't, they put them in odd places. They put it, they're put in the quarantine requirements and testing options section, which doesn't really scream out, hey, that's where the exemptions are. So highlighted them there. So Jim and Karen need to both label this policy and also then put the references to the notification and compliance forms that Phil, that his team will need to create. Those were the, the primary changes to this policy.
Thanks, Paul. Any questions or concerns or comments on any of the changes?
No, it looks good. Thanks for all, all that work.
Incorporated everybody's concerns and
Yeah.
and cleaned up all the issues. So who has a motion for that one?
I move we approve the Ashland Public Schools COVID travel policy for students as presented.
And I'll second.
All in favor, Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Aye.
Karen Williams?
Aye.
An aye for me. That passes. And Paul, thank you for all your, your work on that. That was a lot of work and we appreciate it.
And, and Jim, thanks too for, you know, talking with Michelle and, and getting, having the lawyers look at it too. So, and Mark Terry. So.
Thanks. Yeah. We'll get this out to the public today. The staff one to the staff and the public one to the, to the rest of the community as well. And then I will meet with the admin team to, and Audrey and Ed actually to work through some of the, the procedural pieces that we want folks to follow. That's good. Thank you.
So next phases, models of learning, Jim, it doesn't sound like you're recommending any changes.
Nope, nothing for this week. You know, we're saying status quo in the hybrid for this week and then continue to monitor the data. We'll continue to monitor over the weekend. I hope Audrey and Ed don't have to call me for a weekend. It would be nice. But I doubt that's going to be the case. They want, they want to talk. I'm just, just so you know, it is Masters Sunday. So, you know, it's the sacred day for me.
Right. Give the guy a day off.
But no, other than that, we're good with, with where we are for next week. And I, I do want to emphasize next week is Kelly and Dave confirmed with me just by shaking your head, it's, it's the changing of the new quarter. Today's the last day of the first quarter of the year, by the way. So we're done 25% of the year.
We made it. Yay.
And next week, our students begin with their new set of classes. So I, I hope it is, you know, I want to make sure that we'll follow the data. We're not doing it just because they're starting new classes, but it would be great to have students meet their new teachers, get situated before the, the Thanksgiving break, which is the following week. So let's hope we can, we can do that. Let's hope the data lets us do that next week.
Right. And thank you to all of you for getting us through this, this first term. It really is quite the achievement. And especially if you look at what's going on around us, we really are, have a lot to be proud of here in Ashland. Thanks to all of you.
Yeah. It's nice. And when you look at some of the numbers locally around us, I mean, Medway's down, Hopkinton's down, like there, there are some trends locally that where other communities are seeing not the spike that we saw, but we can actually attribute, we, we know where a couple of our spikes started. It had, it had nothing to do with Ashland Public Schools, believe me. So.
Yeah.
But it is what it is. That's where our numbers are.
Yeah. I mean, just to impress upon anybody that might be listening or watching at some point, I mean, your actions absolutely have an impact on the conversations we need to have, the workload of the individuals we've listed out before, the COVID task force and, and all the people doing the contact tracing. Your poor decisions impact their personal lives. They're, they're, you know, they're not just doing this nine to five, right? They're, they're, they're working on the weekends and you know, I've had personal experiences with people that, you know, and, and this is important, when you get tested matters, you know, I've, 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 I can tell people personal stories about people who had close contacts, got tested, but they got tested too early. Then they developed symptoms, didn't tell another family that they were interacting with, who had then tested positive. All right. So if you're symptomatic, it doesn't matter whether you think it's for something else, unless you're sure, you, you, you gotta do the right thing. We're seeing evidence of, of people making We're seeing evidence of, of people making those poor decisions. And even if we're able to keep the schools open, you owe it to the other families you're going to be interacting with in some way or shape or form, you know? Be cautious. It's difficult. It's difficult to everybody. My, my kids haven't seen their, you know, my, my wife's, uh, uh, mother in over a year now because of this, right? Everybody's needs to make sacrifices. And, and we need to start doing the right thing because we have too many people making poor choices and impacting other families and, 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 and a lot of people. So your, your choices do have impacts. Um, even if you're not at a high risk for a large impact, you're impacting the community. We need to make good, good choices.
Thanks, Paul. And now we have athletics and, and, uh, some information about the winter season.
I don't know if Stephen's still on. Yeah.
You want me just to take it or?
Yeah. I, I also put it on Wednesday's agenda, um, for the, the winter, um, component, just because I know the MIA is putting out actually some comments today. I was in a meeting with them last, yesterday afternoon. So I, I think some more information is going to come out from the MIA hopefully today or maybe next week, but.
Well, let's start the conversation just for anybody who might have.
Sure.
On our agenda.
Yeah.
All right. So, um, I'll start off by saying this, this weekend is the final weekend of the fall one season. And, um, I do want to make sure I say this publicly. I and we should be so proud of our student athletes, our coaches. The other communities that we're working with, um, the fall one season went really, really well for all of those who participated in it. Um, and it, it was not an easy task, but it certainly, um, it certainly worked. So thank you to everybody. In terms of the winter season, um, we have gotten guidance from the EEA, which is sort of the first step. That sort of puts different sports in risk categories and, and whatnot. At this point, like Jim said, the MIAA is meeting to come up with what is really going to be viable options for the winter season statewide. Then after that happens, we will meet as a league, come up with, you know, another sort of proposal, much like we did for the fall. Then it will be up to the individual communities within the league to see what works for us or for them. So there's a number of steps that we still have to go through, but we are certainly, um, working on it and waiting, um, for, for that information. The current start date is still listed as November 30th. I anticipate that being moved back, um, at least one week. So, um, but it's still listed as November 30th, um, from the MIA as of eight 24 this morning. So, um, that's where we're at. But again, um, fall, fall one season went great. And thank you to everyone on this call and, and everybody else in the community because it was fantastic.
Hey, Stephen, do you have an idea when, sorry, Lori?
No, go ahead. Questions, comments?
Stephen, do you have an idea of when the, the, the league will then have, you know, the, the timeframes for those conversations subsequent to the MIA?
I do. So, um, by today, what was supposed to happen was the individual sport committees were supposed to present their modifications to the sports medicine committee of the MIAA. After that, so next week, the sports medicine committee and the COVID task force, the MIA will present to the board of directors for a final approval of what will be offered or could be offered for a winter season statewide. So I anticipate by the middle to the end of next week, we would know from the MIAA what is viable and what can be, um, offered. Then the TVL athletic directors, um, will, will have something within, I'd say, two or three days of when that, um, is presented to us to bring back to our communities.
So potentially something at.
End of the following week or the beginning of the, of the next week. Yes.
Okay. So, so, so towards, towards the end of the month, we should be having, able to have a meaningful discussion about what, uh, we think is possible or not possible.
Yeah. That's what I anticipate as of what I, from the information I know as of right now. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Lori, it's Mark. Just want to say, um, if we're asked the minutes reflect, they came back at 21. In case you couldn't see me on my screen.
Mark, while you were gone, uh, we voted the policies, uh, and I, we all heard that you had the opportunity to give input on that. So hopefully I'll set with what happened there. Um.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Paul, Kathy, Jim, for putting in the time to pull that one together.
Both of them. Thanks for the input. I think, yeah, you had some good, good feedback. So.
Um, any questions on athletics, Mark? We're just about to wrap up the meeting and athletics was the last topic.
No, I, I caught the last couple of minutes of what, what Stephen offered, but I don't want to ask you questions. It's going to cause people to repeat anything. So I'll leave.
Yeah. It's on the agenda again for our next meeting. So you'll have the opportunity to do that then.
I'll also say I, again, as typical, I am in contact with superintendents, um, that we're competing against Norton this weekend in Medway. And, uh, you know, Superintendent Baita, uh, and Superintendent Pires, we're, they're on board with us playing as well. So I just like to connect with them to make sure that we're all on the same page, not just the athletic directors and principals. So.
And Jim, has, just out of curiosity, has any of the other superintendents expressed concern about our spikes, uh, to, to?
No, because they, they actually, um, follow along with, with a lot of our emails and, and we communicate on a regular basis about what are, what's happening with our cases, uh, in the community. So, um, similarly, they're looking at their cases in communities and saying, okay, it's not school related. This is why we're still open. So.
Right. Yeah.
So nice job, Stephen, to everybody, um, pulling that off in the fall. There's a little more concern about internal, um, winter sports, but we'll see.
One day at a time.
One day.
Any other comments or questions before we adjourn? Our updates, Paul? I don't know if there's any updates about the building committee. We can.
Not, not, not for this.
Not today. Okay. Excellent. Um, who's got a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All in favor. Kathy.
Hi.
Mark. Karen. Oh, Karen had to leave. Um, and yes, I have a great day, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thanks, everyone.
Mr. Kendall, will you send me a word version of those? Copy, clean copy?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.